Evening everyone. Want to welcome you to the Griffin Spalding County Board of Education Meeting for September 7th, 2021. At this time, we're going to ask that you place all of your electronic devices on silent or turn them off, whichever is your preference. We want to start off this meeting by asking Mr. Centel Brown to give us a Griffin Spalding County School Spotlight, which is Crescent Road Elementary.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to present our September 2021 Spotlight to Crescent Road Elementary. How many scholars at 10-year school? We currently have 380 scholars at Crescent Road Elementary. What is your school mascot? Crescent Cougars. How many Falconian staff members work at your school? We currently have 55 staff members that comprise of the awesome Crescent Road Elementary staff. A quote from the principal on why you love being the proud principal of your school. "It is a blessing and honor to serve as principal of Crescent Elementary. The Falconian staff at Crescent continue to do an amazing job of meeting the academic and social emotional needs of scholars during the pandemic. Our parents and scholars have been equally amazing with all of the new processes and procedures. I continue to be humbled by the love, care, level of instruction that our scholars are receiving. Saying that, I am a proud principal would be an understatement. It is a privilege to lead the staff of scholars at Crescent." What good things are going on at your school socially and educationally? Our school theme this year is "Oh, the Places Crescent Will Go." While we may be dealing with very challenging times in education due to the pandemic, our staff has not let that keep them from continuing to meet every changing need of our scholars. Our instructional-focused areas for the year are early foundational skills for reading, explicit writing instruction, and math for number sense and problem solving. We have already been busy during the first month of school participating in professional learning, data analysis to support our instructional-focused areas. The teachers at Crescent continue to meet the needs of our scholars with positivity and enthusiasm. Our scholars are receiving engaging and rigorous instruction, and our teachers continue to differentiate to meet the academic and social emotional needs. We have a strong PBIS program at Crescent led by our school counselor and the PBIS team. PBIS expectations have been developed for our school and are consistently taught and reinforced throughout the year. Points are awarded to our scholars for exhibiting positive behaviors. We are using the PBIS reward program and has also implemented a PBIS store for scholars to spend their good behavior tickets. PBIS celebrations take place throughout the year, and we recognize scholars each month as Cougars of the Month. Staff morale is so important and a part of a successful school year. At Crescent, we are always trying to find ways to show our staff how much we appreciate them. We recognize the staff members each month as employee of the month. Our staff also nominates and selects a PBIS staff member of the month as well. We provide various treats and surprises for a pick-me-up throughout the year. Crescent is extremely lucky to have a very active and supportive PTO. They collaborate with our staff birthdays each month, provide goodies for our staff throughout the year, support our art program, and last-year-purchased Chromebooks for all of our teachers to assist with the remote learning. They are a vital part of the CIST of our school. Crescent was recently named the 2021 Georgia Department of Education School Reward School. Reward schools are among the five percentile of Title I schools in the state that are making the most progress in improving the performance for all scholars. Let's give them a hand for that. What is the school doing to create a culture of family? We have participated in some valuable professional learning over the past year for restorative practices with our students. We have implemented the morning meetings as a way to build a community within our classrooms. As a staff, we are focusing on understanding the instructional needs of diverse populations through subgroup data analysis. We recently held data meetings to look at our spring map and data, and will begin digging into our fall map data next month to identify the needs of our scholars based on subgroups. As a school, we have celebrated Red Ribbon Week, Bullying Prevention Month, and World Kindness Day. Our scholars also receive a daily second-step lessons that are taught and reinforced to promote social, emotional, and academic success through accepting differences in others. Thank you so much for recognizing Crescent as the spotlight school for the September Board of Education Meeting. As the principal of Crescent, I continue to be in awe of the hard work and dedication my staff, scholars, and parents give. We are the mighty Crescent Cougars, and we can't wait to see "Oh, the Places Will Go" this year. Ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls, please give a rounding round of applause to Crescent Road Elementary as our September School Spotlight. At this time, Mr. Chair, I ask that principal chambers and staff members and scholars who are present may come and receive the spotlight award. Crescent is in District 2, so Mr. Doss, if you will present them with your certificate. Mr. Chair, that concludes the school spotlight, sir.
Thank you so much, Mr. Brown. Before we proceed, do we have Miley White present? Come on up, Ms. White. She's going to lead us in our pledge, but before we do our pledge, we're going to have Mr. Doss to do our prayer. And then, Ms. Miley, you can come and stand right here next to, after he do the prayer, you can stand right here next to Mr. Simmons and lead us in our pledge, okay? Let us all stand.
Let us pray. Father Lord, we just thank you for this day. Oh, we just take a moment and pause for those that are hurting and have lost. We ask, Father Lord, that you comfort those families, especially those in our transportation department. I ask, Father Lord, that you lead us and guide us in the business of this meeting, that we can do the very best for Griffin Spalding County scholars, teachers, and parents. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Let us pray.
I have a pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Miley, for leading us in our pledge, and I proudly say that I am a Crescent Cougar. I can't tell you what years I was there. I can't even remember them myself. Next, we want to adopt our agenda as presented or with any corrections or deletions or additions. Can I get a motion to adopt our agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
We got a motion. Can we get a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Cook. All in favor, show by raising your hand. Right, march. Agenda adopted. Next, we want to do our Griffin Spalding County School System announcements. We'll turn that over to Board Member, Mr. Brown.
Thank you so much again, Mr. Chair. It is always a pleasure when we are able to involve scholars in our school district and throughout the legislative process. Tonight, our scholar clerk is no stranger to our Griffin Spalding community. It is no other than Madam President J.C. Barnes. J.C. serves as the FBLA president at Spalding High School. She is also the student body president at Spalding High School, and she is the state president for 4-H. Ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls, children of all ages, I bring to you our scholar clerk, Madam President J.C. Barnes.
Chairman Holmes, Members of the Board, and Superintendent Simmons. My name is J.C. Barnes, and I am a senior at Spalding High School. I would like to thank the Board of Education for involving scholars of the district in the policy and legislative process. The announcements for September 7th, 2021 Board of Education Meeting are as follows. On Tuesday, September 14th, 2021, the Millage Rate Public Hearing will be held at 216 South 6th Street, Griffin, Georgia 30224, at the GSCS Learning Center at 10:00 a.m. Tuesday, September 14th, will be the Board of Education Retreat at the Griffin Spalding County School System Learning Center. On Tuesday, October 5th, 2021, the Board of Education Meeting will be held at the GSCS Learning Center at 6:00 p.m. The week of October 11th through the 15th, 2021, Griffin Spalding County School System will be on fall break. Tuesday, October 19th, 2021, the Board of Education Work Session will be held at the GSCS Learning Center at 4:00 p.m. Tuesday, September 21st, 2021, the Millage Rate Public Hearings will be held at the GSCS Learning Center at 10:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. Tuesday, September 21st, 2021, the Board of Education Meeting and Millage Rate Adoption will be held at the GSCS Learning Center at 6:30 p.m. Governance team, cabinet members, and stakeholders, this concludes the Board of Education announcements for Tuesday, September 7th, 2021. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes. You represent your mother and father well. At this time, we are moving to the recognition part of our agenda, and we'll turn that over to Ms. Barbara Jo Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have some exciting awards tonight. The first is the Quality Leaders Academy Cohort 6, Dr. Stephanie Evans.
Good evening. Board members, Superintendent Simmons, and guests, it is my pleasure to recognize two members from the Quality Leaders Academy. These participants recently completed their coursework for aspiring leaders, and we want to recognize their accomplishment. The Quality Leaders Academy embodies a collaborative, logical, and practical model for developing school leaders at all levels of the Griffin Spalding County School System. Participants learned about leadership roles, responsibilities, and expectations. The two participants are Dusty Penholster and Quanidra Jackson. Dusty Penholster is a teacher at Cowan Road Middle School, where she has served as a master teacher, grade-level chair, and MTSS chair. She is currently a 7th-grade social studies teacher at Cowan Road Middle School. Quanidra Jackson began her teaching career in 2014 at Ann Street Elementary. She moved to Oars in 2015, where she worked as a teacher and an academic coach. She is currently the assistant principal at Oars Elementary. At this time, if the participants, Quanidra Jackson and Dusty Penholster, will come to the front to receive your certificate and your pin.
Dr. Evans. Dr. Evans. Yep. There you go.
Leader, if I could, make a comment about the Quality Leaders Academy. I just want to say, the work that we're doing set forth in our district's strategic plan, quality leadership sits at the helm of everything that we do. We have a talented group of people who work in Griffin Spalding County schools, and I love how our district has taken and invested in developing our talent pool here and into effective leaders. If we want to keep the best of the best and develop the cream of the crop for our scholars, programs like the Quality Leaders Academy help us to do just that. Investment in our human resources helps keeps us Griffin great and Spalding strong. Let us continue to work of our local leadership developing so that we can retain quality leaders who will ensure that we are giving our scholars access to the highest quality education. Thank you so much, Dr. Evans, for that.
Next, Griffin Spalding County System 2021-2022 Teachers of the Year, Dr. Donald Warren.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Our Board members, Superintendent Mr. Simmons, and members of our audience. We're very fortunate at this time to recognize 19 Teachers of the Year from each of our campuses, selected by their peers. The conveyance of peer recognition is especially appreciated as it signals three items. First of all, a high respect for your practice to provide high-quality instruction. Secondly, you're a service as a role model for students and colleagues alike. And last but not least, a continuous display of professionalism on a day-in and day-out basis. At this time, we're going to use a video to introduce our 19 Teachers of the Year to you. Please join me in giving these superstars a round of applause. From these 19 applications, an independent panel used a rubric to determine our three finalists for our district-wide Teacher of the Year. These three teachers will now participate in classroom observations and a personal interview before the district-wide Teacher of the Year is selected. This announcement will take place at our Board of Education Meeting on Tuesday, November 2nd. I want to congratulate 21-22 GSCS Teacher of the Year finalists. These three individuals are very, very deserving. As I call your name, please come up front, and you receive a certificate and a token of our appreciation, and we'll take one group photo with our Board of Education Superintendent. First of all, from Griffin High School, Mr. Chris Bailey. Secondly, from Cowan Road Middle School, the Panthers, Ms. Shawana Dukes. And last but not least, from Jordan Hill Elementary School, Ms. April Oxenford. This time, we'll stand up front and take a group photo with our Board of Education Superintendent.
Congratulations to each one of you. You are the heartbeat of this school system. Please know how much we appreciate each one of you and what you do for our students every day, and especially during this past year and this current year. Know that we are behind you 100% and we appreciate everything that you do. Thank you. Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you so much, Ms. Cook. And I also echo Mrs. Cook's sentiments about our Teachers of the Year. Next, we have public comment, and I'd just like to read to you some guidelines. Just a formality, because I know no one would need them. But as the guidelines state, any individual desiring to speak, excuse me, requested to give his or her name, address, and the group, if any, that he or she is representing. The speaker should speak to the board, not the audience. The presentation should be brief as brief as possible, yet should include all information considered important by the speaker. Unless an extension of time is granted, each speaker shall not exceed five minutes. If one spokesperson has presented a matter, it is not necessary for others to repeat the same ideas. Other speakers on the same subject shall usually be limited to one minute. Questions, suggestions, proposals, or criticism which have been presented verbally should also be submitted when practical in writing and should be signed by the individual or the spokesperson of the group appearing before the board. And last, persons appearing before the board are reminded as a point of information that members of the board are without authority to act independently as individuals in official matters. With that being said, our first person up for public comment is Chastity Nichols. And if you don't mind, approach the podium and give us your address before you proceed.
102 St. Luke Drive. Hello, it's nice to be here to address the Board and Superintendent and offer some solutions about the issues at hand again. I do want to go ahead and clarify that we are extremely grateful as parents for doing everything that you can to ensure the safety of our children. And I, for one, if it has not been thanked yet for the mask mandate, personally do thank you now here today. All right, let me first, again, say thank you for mandating the mask as requested by many parents after the first week of school. I want to first suggest that the Board of Education members and the Superintendent visit the schools in our district unannounced as often as they possibly can once this week of virtual is over with to ensure those masks are being mandated properly. I have photos schools in this district have willingly posted on their social media accounts after the mandate of no social distancing being practiced and teachers and students without masks on. This is not helping to prevent the spread of the deadly virus and its variants. My 15-year-old, who attended Spalding High School, sent me a voice recording, which I'll gladly play for the board members after tonight's meeting, if they'd like for me to do so, saying to her students, and I quote, "I want to move to Florida, where the sensible people live that don't wear masks." Teachers are very much appreciated by us parents. However, these type of comments are unacceptable, especially to students. This same teacher went on to communicate her racist views about our border and Hispanic community during the pandemic. Now, I'll move on and address the fact that this district is not being transparent about the COVID numbers posted weekly on its platforms. Three bus drivers have now died, and during the mandatory meeting, some bus drivers asked Superintendent how many more of them have to die before a permanent virtual option for the parents who want it would be an option, and his response was pretty much to tell them, "Until he has no more drivers." I'll also add that drivers are forced to come to work even when they have children quarantining at home. Drivers are being told to find their own solution to the issue. There's no time between routes to clean the buses properly. Drivers report at least 50 kids minimum on the buses, and many won't wear their mask. We're not asking you to shut the schools down entirely. We're asking you to offer virtual with the $32 million funded for COVID relief that you have to the parents who want it for their children. Doing so will lower the risk of exposure by having hopefully less children in school, which in return would allow proper social distancing and help lower the exposure during the school bus routes and in the classrooms. You have drivers working four to six routes a day with three children to a seat, and those same children are showing up late for school because of this. Don't try to accommodate those who so willingly allow themselves to be exposed to this virus, who refuse to wear a mask, who refuse to vaccinate themselves, and refuse to believe the science behind facts, and are the same ones willing to send their children to school sick with symptoms because they are weak-minded and gullible enough to believe in online conspiracy theories. Instead, do what you know is consciously the right thing to do for the safety of everyone in this district. This isn't about politics, and it's beyond being about anyone's rights anymore. No one has the right to endanger anyone else's life, period. Let's no longer accommodate those who are selfish in this community and instead begin accommodating those who are doing everything they can to prevent the spread of the COVID-19 virus, which, by the way, despite what many believe from QAnon, aka 4chan, is very real. If things don't change for the better for the students in this district, I know that funding is provided based off of enrollment. To the parents of children in this district who want their kids in virtual learning, Georgia Cyber Academy has enrollment open until later this month, depending on the grade and waitlist. And I encourage anyone who wants to get their kids out of the GSCS district, seeing as how they aren't offering many parents that opportunity to do so right now during this pandemic, to research this lottery-funded accredited Georgia cyber school that has been operating since 2007. By the way, the good thing about science is that it's true, whether or not you believe in it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Nichols. Next up, and I've been practicing this name, Ms. Angelina Ruthier. Did I get it right? Angelina Ruthier. Did I get it right? All right.
102 St. Luke Drive. Good afternoon, I'm Angelina Ruthier. I attend Spalding High School and take part in ninth grade. I'm here to, I'm here today to state my personal concerns for the well-being of me, myself, and my peers. Things I've experienced firsthand as a student in this, in this district is disturbing. As a student, I am frightened, nervous, and overall afraid for my community. I've spoken before about the circumstances involving the coronavirus publicly, although there seems to be a disadvantage in those topics. I hold nothing but gratitude towards, towards the official mandatory mask regulation. Unfortunately, it seems that this, that the issues before the mask mandate are still continuing, taking the lives of several people. Though I'm only 15, I will proceed to use my voice. I'm concerned for the fact that the cases are still rising. My solution and suggestion is to resolve these issues is to listen and take notes to every parent and every student and make accommodations for all. Some might say that children are only to be seen and that they should be, and that they should only kept, be kept in a manly fashion and keep silent. As I speak on the behalf of my fellow peers that are also frightened, I have spoken my words. All I have to ask is that you listen to it. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me today.
Thank you, Ms. Ruthier. Next, we have Brandy Byard. If you don't mind, just state your address once you reach the podium.
Hello, my name is Brandy Byard. My address is 135 Bethany Road. Before I start to speak, though.
Can't understand you.
You can't understand me?
Yeah, just speak into the microphone, please.
135 Bethany Road. My name is Brandy Byard. Before I actually speak, we were required, the three of us were required to show ID, and someone signed up after the meeting. So I just want to make sure they are required as well to show the ID before they speak or whatnot. Anyway, I'm here to ask and offer a solution for the issues that we have about our school, our kids being in person. I've kind of went back and forth with one of the board members for a couple of days now about you all saying that you offered us a virtual solution, which that's not the argument. They did offer, you did offer a virtual solution, but it was only to withdraw your kid from Spalding County School System and let them be an online student where they cannot partake in any activities of the school. And to me, that's a force. That's why you have 98% of kids in, in-person school right now. That's why we have this whole issue of bus drivers getting sick because there's so many people and there's no social distancing. No, there's no protocol or anything like that. What I'm asking you to do is offer the same virtual that you offered last year. It worked out for everybody. It's a compromise for the people who want their kids in school, and they can choose to put them in school, and it can be for the people who don't, don't want their kids in school but still be a student of Griffin High. I'm going to show you why it's so important that with my daughter, like for instance, she's an athlete. Last year she went virtual, her grade, her grade point average went down to 3.6 from a 3.9, but it's not that bad that she did so awful while still playing basketball. And it means so much to her, she's a senior this year. Like, why would I force her to be a student of an online school and she's, gets so much dedication and effort to be a Griffin High student, graduate from Griffin High, get her scholarships and everything to be seen for her for basketball, and take that away because I want her to be safe? That's not fair for a lot of students. Even the other, the student that just spoke, she's in FLA, she wouldn't be able to partake in that activity if she chose your online that you offered this year, which the numbers weren't even as bad when you offered it back in May. So I'm hoping that you all would do a compromise for the people who are fussing at y'all about not doing masks, we're doing this, blah, 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 and actually let those people choose to put their kid in school because it's going to still give you less kids in the class, less kids on the bus. You don't have to have longer bus routes, and it would just provide a solution for everybody, I believe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Byard. Next, we have Ms. Shannon Martin. And again, I ask that you state your address before you proceed.
She has spoken before.
Good afternoon. My name is Shannon Martin, and I live at 51 Caldwell Road, Griffin, Georgia. And first of all, I just wanted to say or acknowledge that about our bus drivers and what they've done for us. I went in here at the beginning, so I don't know if it's already been acknowledged, but, and then the sincere condolences, you know, for what's happened. Okay. Okay, can y'all hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Anyway, I just wanted to acknowledge the bus drivers and give my sincere condolences. And then I want to thank the teachers and the paraproses for all that they do and that, that they're getting the brunt end of the deal. They're getting blamed and they have to deal with just as much as, you know, we do. We have some that are parents and they've just found out that if they can't, if they have to help their kids virtually, then they have to take, use their personal days or days without pay. So they're out there, you know, with the rest of the parents. And I want to thank the substitutes. If it wasn't for the substitutes, the teachers would not get to take any kind of leave or trainings, which leads into one of my other points. I went to talk to Mr. Simmons about a couple of different things, and one of the things was concerning a group that some of the teachers were a part of, but just one that was pertaining to me. And so that's all that I'm bringing up. But the teacher, along with a couple of the school board members, are part of this, and they've gone and stalked other people's pages. But like I said, I'm going with mine. They've gotten pictures from my page and posted them along with ugly messages. And one of the teachers said that I'm nothing but a substitute. Well, if it wasn't for the substitutes, again, these teachers wouldn't be allowed, wouldn't be able to take their leave, to go to trainings. And I brought this up to Mr. Simmons, and he said that I was just being sensitive. But if she has said this about me, I know she said about others, but I can only speak for myself. Okay, now on the mask. An email was sent out on August the 8th requiring students and the staff to wear the mask. I asked about the football, and the response was masks only had to be worn inside. So my question was, how are the other sports that are inside able to play if they're having to wear masks and they're not wearing masks? And then I asked about the football, and he said that he wasn't going to cancel a game unless there is a bad case of COVID. Well, I think COVID is COVID. And, you know, the CDC was brought up, and I let him know that football was one of the highest levels of sport of transmitting COVID because they're all on each other and, you know, huddled up and spit and sweat and all that. And then in the locker rooms. And again, he said he wasn't canceling. So I just asked him, you know, are we picking and choosing what guidelines we're going to go by? And again, but, but if they're on the school, it was stated that the kids were not mandate, men didn't have to play sports. They were not mandated to play sports, and that was their choice. And so he wasn't going to cancel the games unless there was a high COVID case. And at the time, there was one boy that was pulled from the game. And so, and he was around the other players. Also, I'm not mandatory, I'm not for anything mandatory. The masks, the shots, I can take care of my kid. I liked what Brandy was saying about having the choice of, you know, like we did last year, virtual or non-virtual. And they say it takes a village to raise a child. Other counties are doing things, maybe we can talk to them. Somebody brought up hybrid teaching. I think, I'd never heard of it. I think that's pretty cool. And then Pike County is doing elementary in school and the middle and, you know, high school in the build, I mean, virtual. You know, maybe that'll help with the busloads. Anyway, that's all I got on time set. But thank y'all for listening and taking consideration for what we have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. And before we move to the next segment of our agenda, on behalf of the, the governance team, I want to say to everyone that made public comments, we welcome you. And it's not like we don't listen. We welcome you for coming and showing concern for our school district. It's not our school district, but it's our school district. So I thank you all for coming. You were heard, notes were taken, and we have ongoing discussions. We talk, if not every day, every other day via email, texts, or whatever, but we have our ear to the ground. We're not, you know, just out on some island and not being affected by this. We have family, friends, and grandkids and kids that are affected by this in school as well. So don't think that we are not affected by it because we sit on the board. So again, thank you. And at this time, we will take a five-minute break to allow anyone that would like to leave, anyone that would like to ask any questions of any board member or superintendent, feel free to do so during our break. Again, thank you. Yeah, yeah, should be all right. All right, thank you once again. And this time, we're going to put the consent agenda up for a motion. Can I get a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Got a motion by Mr. Dawes. Can I get a second? Got a second by Mr. Brown. Ms. Cook is, hasn't returned, but we have enough to vote, go ahead and vote until she get back. All in favor, show by raising. 401 absent. Action items, we have Spalding High School culinary equipment purchase. Dr. Laurel Ergle. How you doing, Doc?
I'm doing well. Good evening, Chairman Holmes, Board members, and Superintendent Simmons. Tonight I come before you to seek approval for a funding request for commercial kitchen equipment for the Culinary Arts Lab at Spalding High School. As you know, we did some renovations at Spalding High School over the summer with East Bloss funds. So CTAE applied and received a capital-related equipment grant with the Georgia Department of Education in the amount of $90,000. Tonight, we are asking approval to purchase a six-gallon steam kettle, two heating and proofing cabinets, a 36-inch six-burner gas range with convection oven, a 60-inch six-burner gas range with a griddle broiler and convection oven, as well as a new ice machine. We did receive three quotes. I believe that they're in your packet, and we're asking approval to spend $27,292 from the lowest vendor, Katam. So board members, do you have any questions?
Board members, any questions? You've heard Dr. Ergle's recommendation, and you should have it in your packet. Can we get a motion to accept?
So moved.
Got a motion. Can we get a second?
Second.
Got a second. And just to clarify, Dr. Ergle, the, the recommendation again is for $27,292, just so everybody's on the same page. All in favor, show by raising your right hand.
Ms. Cook's here.
Ms. Cook, okay, I'm sorry, Ms. Cook. Hey, 50.
by the board, it will go to Mr. Simmons and to Mr. Holmes to go through and sign electronically the new format, and then that will be considered at the upcoming legislative sessions at the new year. So with that, we want to put out there tonight, it will allow us to get a little over $1.3 million for renovations and modifications that we're already working on the design for, for Cowan Road Middle School. And with that being said, we'd like to recommend that Griffin County Board of Education approve the application and certify the FY 2023 State Capital Outlay Projects Application Cowan Road Middle School Facility so we can return it to the Georgia Department of Education for incorporation and processing. Do you have any questions?
All right, no questions, Boyd. Thank you, Mr. Ballot. Thick little packet here. And we want to accept a motion for the application project that Mr. Ballot just briefed us on.
So moved.
Got a motion. Can we get a second?
Second.
Got a second. All in favor?
Five.
5-oh. Thank you, Mr. Ballot. Next, we have our 2021-2022 Tribunal Panel by Mr. Anthony Akins.
Evening, Mr. Holmes, Board members, Mr. Simmons. I'm here tonight seeking approval from the Board for the recommendation of the 2021-2022 Tribunal Panel. Each year, based on policy JCEB, we are required to bring forth a panel of 10 administrators, school administrators, to be approved to use as a hearing panel if necessary. In the past, and currently, we use Mr. Tom Isom as our hearing officer to handle our tribunal panels. At any time of request, or we feel the need, these members can sit on the panel with him for a hearing. If there is an appeal, we would go back and use panel members for those appeals since he would not be able to hear the case again. So the group is before you hear, a mixture of 10 people, and I have a note at the bottom that although we name 10 people, every school administrator in the system is certified as a hearing officer to serve on the tribunal panel. So if necessary, we could pull from outside of this panel as well. We're just required to give you a list of 10. So at this time, it's recommended that Griffin Spalding County Board of Education approve the submitted tribunal panel members for the 2021-2022 school year. Are there any questions?
No question. All right, Boyd, you've heard Mr. Akins' comments, and you have a list of folks that are on that tribunal panel. Can we get a motion to accept the recommendation?
So moved.
Got a motion. Can we get a second?
Second.
Got a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. You approved, Mr. Brown? Okay, 5-oh.
Let me just make this comment. As I was looking at my notes from August 4, 2024, and I'm sure that your senators probably have not been there, so I'm not going to go through that now, but I spoke with Mr. Akins about it. We're going to talk about tomorrow so that we can some of the things we're asked for August 4, 2024, and so our votes are over his. I think kind of wrong to speak to him. We're going to work it out until 2024.
Okay, all right. Thank you, sir. Duly noted. All in favor again, 5-oh. Thank you, Boyd. Next, we have presentations on reapportionment by our board attorney, Mr. Tim Shepherd.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When we last met, we talked about reapportionment, and I was going to, based on the information that I had at the time, get with Flow Analytics to see if we could negotiate a contract that I could present to the board. Since that time, I had the opportunity to attend the Council of School Attorneys meeting and found out a couple of things with regard to reapportionment that, to me, changes things, especially as far as the time factor that I wanted to bring to the board's attention, and then y'all can give me my marching orders. First, I was not aware that in 2019, the General Assembly adopted a statute that created the Legislative and Congressional Reapportionment Office of the General Assembly. Basically, and I haven't talked to anybody in the legislature as to the why of this, but it almost looks like the legislature substituted a preclearance process at the state level when the Supreme Court struck it down at the federal level. I'm not saying good or bad, I'm just saying if you look at the process, that's what it looks like. What it briefly says is that this Legislative and Congressional Reapportionment Office will have to review any proposed reapportionment maps before the General Assembly can consider it, and it's got a process in there. That leads to the second thing that I learned that I think is really dictates that we don't need to be in this big a hurry as I was trying to make us be in. From what I learned at that meeting, this newly-created office will not consider any local reapportionment maps until they finish the House of Representatives, the State Senate, and the congressional maps. Second, I learned that the governor is going to call the legislature back in to special session for reapportionment, but only for state offices, only for the legislature, the Senate, and the congressional districts. They're not going to consider any proposed reapportionment districts on the local level until the legislature meets in their regular session in January. So all that to say, no need in being in a hurry in my mind. It doesn't change whether or not the board wants to use Flow Analytics, or whether or not the board wants to use the legislature. It just changes whether or not we need to be in a hurry.
With that being said, just a quick poll. Board members, I know we said we were going to talk to our counterparts with the county. Have you all had any kind of indication from them on which direction they're going to go? Any other board members? No indications?
I just remember early on, Mr. Shepherd, you mentioned to us that if we do employ Flow Analytics, that because everyone in the state is doing this, that should we try to enter in a contract with them, or should we, you know, because of the depth of their workload? I mean, I guess I'm just asking you for input. Thank you.
Well, I guess I can answer that question in two parts. Of course, I've never had any personal experience with Flow. I came across them based upon talking to the city attorney for the city of Brookhaven. They used Flow, and he told me he could highly recommend them. These folks, it's a nationwide company. This is what they do. So they apparently know what they're doing. The second part of the answer deals with what we've said a little bit earlier, that you kind of get what you pay for. If we chose to, or if the board chose to use the state office, I still have a lot of doubts as to how much input the board's going to be able to have with the districts. So...
Well, and it goes back to a concern of mine I raised a couple of weeks ago, or two meetings ago, you know, and we all know that's the reason that we have a out-of-pocket, I mean, it does our audit every year down at Columbus rather than waiting on the state to do it. I don't know, I just, I think I feel better today just not depending on the state, based on what you have already told us that Flow Analytics would provide to us. And it also gives us, if we do that, and the county stays with the state, that we have two pictures to look at to make a decision. I think we have more options with outside sources, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Ms. McDonald, I really haven't changed my recommendation either. I just, I found out some things that I thought were game changers as far as whether or not we needed to be in a hurry, and just wanted to make the board aware of that.
Okay, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Holmes, just based upon your first question to us, I was able to meet with my counterpart, Mr. Dutton. I know that he was not in favor of the county going with Flow Analytics. It's my understanding that the county has decided not to do that with us. Is that correct?
My understanding is that the county voted a couple, three weeks ago to submit it to the state and let this newly-created office with the state handle it.
And so my thoughts on it are now, if we're going to, it's basically $15,000 for us to get two or three options that are brought back to us versus waiting on the state and it not costing us anything. I don't have a dog in the fight, as long as the district lines that are presented to us don't put us in a position to where we're outside of our districts and have to do something, you know, significantly changes then. Who I represent, I represent. And so that part of it doesn't matter to me. So I don't have an opinion one way or another, but if we can save $15,000, I'm in favor of saving $15,000.
But by having an outside source, you also give our constituents the opportunity to look at more as to what it is, what it possibly could be. I just, I'm always one that I like to have choices. I like to have educational choices rather than just being told by the state, A, B, C, D. And, you know, I base that on us doing our audits down at Columbus rather than waiting on the state to audit us every year. I just, I agree with you. I think you get what you pay for, and sometimes paying nothing is really not good. So. But if I can provide my constituents, the people that we serve, more information, then I think it's a win, win for not only this board, but for our constituents that we represent.
Mr. Shepherd, you know, I know you was on, you was the attorney when we went through something similar to this some years ago, and the guidelines that they use for the racial percentages and all of that, they're basically going to use the same criteria of everything when they draw these lines, correct?
The way I understand, well, you've got two, you're going to have two folks potentially looking over your shoulder. You've got the state office that you have to run it by, and they're going to analyze it to make sure you don't create little islands and that you don't do something that's going to throw it out of whack. Either number of people in each district, the racial balance in the district, they're going to look at all that. The other people that are going to be looking over your shoulder would be the feds, if somebody were to actually file a complaint under the Voting Rights Act. But it would be under several things, one of which you just mentioned.
Okay. Mr. Leader, if I may as well, I'm in favor of saving $15,000 as well. I think for the most part, it's just making sure that the BOE members and the Board of Commissioners are on the same page. So for example, if we can get the maps and get the lines drawn and sent back to us, and myself and Commissioner Flowers-Taylor are okay with how District 1 looks, then I'm okay with that.
Well, we, like Mr. Shepherd, I'm kind of in agreement with him. I'm glad we got some time. We can kind of digest and have conversations and before we have to, you know, make this decision. And having gone through it, and myself and Ms. Cook, it's always good to be able to have input into what the district is going to look like. And, you know, that's just going to be something that not only us sitting on the board now, but anyone in the future coming and representing the people on the board, you know, we got to think along those lines as well.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'm not really sure what procedure, because you can't get it from the statute, the, this new Legislative Reapportionment Office is going to go through. If we choose to let them draw the map, we basically make a formal request that they do it. They're not going to, they're not going to get started on it until they finish the Legislative Senate and the congressional districts. And then they've got every local government in the state of Georgia that they've got to do this for. So we don't know how long it'll take. We don't know how much input they will allow us to have while they're doing their thing. If you hire an outside source, what you do is you'll have to submit, and this is before this board formally adopts it, this is in the statute, you would submit your proposed redistricting or reapportionment map to this state office for them to look at it to see if it's got any flaws that they can find. Then it comes back for you to adopt, and then you would get one of our legislative delegation to actually sponsor the bill to be introduced to adopt the reapportion districts. I don't know if I just made that clear as mud or not, but...
But to Mr. Brown's point, I agree, but also you have to, we have to think globally too when we do this, because it's going to be my district that's probably going to have the biggest increase. And I have to, I answer to my district, just as Mr. Brown answers to his, and we all answer to ours. But not only do we need to think locally, but I think we need to consider thinking globally with regard to all of us that are representatives of the people. Because I think District 5 is getting, is going to probably change the most.
I would think that it's going to get geographically smaller.
Yeah, right.
Because the increase in your district has been in...
Right. So I would ask that the board, my colleagues, my peers, keep an open mind with regard to that, with regard to the five districts that we represent here. That's all I would ask you to do. Thank you.
Most definitely. Thank you all for your comments. Next, do we have Mr. Jones ready? Lanny?
Sir, he's here.
We have Mr. Byron Jones. We know he's been under the weather, but he's a trooper, and he's going to go over our mileage rate, just give us a synopsis, and he'll be more detailed at the hearings. But how you doing, Mr. Jones?
Doing good. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. The floor is yours. Go ahead.
Before I get started, don't look at the top of my head. I told Mr. Simmons my wife
That's definitely it. Thank you all for your comments. Uh, next, uh, do we have Mr. Jones ready? Lanny?
Sir, he's here.
We have, uh, Mr. Byron Jones, we know he's been under the weather, but he's a trooper, and he's going to go over our millage rate, uh, just give us a synopsis, and he'll be more detailed, uh, at the hearings. But how you doing, Mr. Brown, Mr. Jones?
Doing good, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. The floor is yours, go ahead.
Before I get started, don't look at the top of my head, I told Mr. Simmons my wife got me home and shaved my head. So, this is about, this is about two weeks in that you're thin like this. But, uh, you want me to go ahead and start?
Yes, sir, it's yours.
Okay, fir-, first, let me say thank you to everybody that's called and spoke to me, I feel real fortunate and humbled to, uh, to be honest, we work with a supportive staff, supportive superintendent, supportive board. About fifteen months into this journey with Griffin's Fall, and I really appreciate all of you, I want you to know that from the bottom of my heart. So, um, I'm gonna try to share my screen here in just a second, but I did wanna make a few comments first. Um, before I show the slides, there's about ten slides, it's just a brief overview tonight, and I wanna remind you, as we talk about the millage rate, you're gonna have five opportunities to give feedback before you make a final decision. Uh, one of those is tonight, uh, and then as we go down the calendar, at the last slide that I have, you'll have a hearing number fourteen, two hearings on the twenty-first, and then an adoption, uh, board meeting number twenty-first, so that's five different times if you've got any concerns to share with the superintendent on this data. Uh, so let me try to go ahead and pull this up right quick. I, I can't see you, can everybody see that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, um, as we go through here, again, this is our 2021, I don't wanna confuse you, the, the Tax Commissioners Office works on a calendar year, so it's 2021's millage rate, uh, for fiscal year twenty-two for our budget. Uh, again, our mission in non-negotiable is to be professional accountable, and my goal tonight is obviously to communicate effectively. This presentation is to help inform the Board of Education and Superintendent, but also since we're live streaming, it would be also to inform the public if we encourage any questions, and I've got my contact information on the last slide, if anybody wants to reach out to me personally, glad to talk to you. Strategy map, obviously, we're focusing on the fiscal responsibility piece, but it all goes back into student achievement. Uh, uh, this is basically for the funding piece, but we all know where our sixty-five percent plus expenditures are in the construction categories. For a little bit of background, the Board of Education, uh, accepted the Superintendent's recognition on June fifteenth. We adopted the general fund, special revenue fund, school nutrition fund, and capital project funds. If you'll remember, we are zeroing out the debt service funds because we have completed those bonds, those were paid off last year. Uh, at the time, when I put this in yellow, uh, we did not have the digest values, which we're gonna look at in just a second, uh, so we're making assumptions at the budget. Uh, if you'll remember, we did use our CARES two money, which is approximately thirteen million dollars, we were using a portion of that to balance our budget, maybe two, three, four million, somewhere in that range, we used CARES one before I came on board, that was planned, and then CARES two, we're looking at next year, possibly the year after. The reason I remind you of that is that money will run out, um, and the, uh, there will be a need to look at the millage rate, et cetera, so that's one of the reasons we're going ahead and looking at that, looking at the assessed values. This is a little bit, I think you've got a paper on this as well, uh, the assessments, which we're gonna talk about in a second, is what we millaged basically. So I hope everybody is familiar with the five-year tax digest, this was running the newspaper today, along with the next slide I'm gonna show you. Basically, by law, we have to focus to our current years, property tax digest, which is the far-right column, and then the preceding five years. I wanna focus on a couple of line items in here, uh, this is a PBL, I'm trying to get some yellow on it, but I wasn't able to get it, so if you'll focus on the net digest value in the middle of the page, um... In the twenty sixteen through twenty twenty-one, in the middle of the page, net digest value, those values have continued to escalate year by year by year, and they were escalating prior to this document. Uh, I think the millage rate has been rolled back approximately seven years in a row. If you'll drop on down to the net MNO millage rate, in the twenty sixteen column, it's where it says eighteen point five seven, you can see that it has been dropped the last five years over this table, and probably prior to as well, would have gone to the left-hand side of the page. So in theory, what, what this shows you in our right-hand column, which is the twenty twenty-one, if we leave the millage rate the same as it is right now, which is sixteen point seven four two, the school board would realize approximately one point eight million dollars in additional taxes. We would have to reduce that amount by the tax collection fee, which is two and a half percent. You would also need to fill in an uncollectible amount for, uh, those who may or may not have the ability to pay their taxes. So, you know, the true number might be more like one point four million, one point three, one point five, in that range. That represents about six point eight percent prior than the prior year. I stress that column on this page, just so that you know, that sometimes when we put in the newspaper by law, it's confusing the public, this is representative of all taxation, which will mean your improvements, uh, people building a porch, building a swimming pool, et cetera. We're going to give those increases regardless of the millage rate, and in the preceding years where you all have rolled the millage rate back, uh, those numbers, like in the twenty twenty column, where it has four hundred ninety-one thousand, six ninety-two, those are representative of improvements to property, uh, where you rolled the rate back, you still got the value of those. So, before I move to the next slide, the twenty twenty-one column, again, is one point eight billion. If you all decided to roll the millage rate back, that, that number would be approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand and eight hundred thousand, not one point eight billion. So the difference in that, in those two figures, is about a million dollars, is what we're talking about. Uh, I'm gonna go ahead to the next slide, I'll be glad to take questions, I just can't see if you're, if you're asking.
You're good, go ahead.
Okay. This next form, uh, this is, this is just to show you what Superintendent Simmons or Board Chair Holmes, one of the two, will be signing whenever the millage rate is adopted. If you all decide to leave the millage rate at sixteen point seven four two, then this form just indicates that's a three point nine two percent for assessment purposes, not, not the, uh, items we would receive for building improvements, et cetera. So three point nine two percent is the amount of increases for reassessed value in the county. So this form is a, is a standard form that has to be, uh, filled out, Ms. Hollins, Sylvia Hollins filled this out for me, and we debated it to make sure it's right, and she sent it to me, I'll go ahead and show you that tonight. Um, this form here was also in the paper today, Griffin News, uh, this is a by-law ad, we have to, has to be known as the thirty-square inch, that three point nine two percent in yellow, uh, these words are by law, so I don't have any discretion on changing them. That is from that form that I just showed you. Again, though, that is representative of reassessed property. So if a reassessed property in the county, uh, was a certain value, and they got reassessed, that you, they would see an increase of the yellow item down at the bottom, twenty, approximately twenty-five dollars is what it would impact, a hundred thousand dollar home. Um, again, this is a yearly value, this is not monthly, so I wanna stress that, some people might see that and think it's monthly, but that is, that's yearly. Uh, and you can see in our ad here, we're advertising two, uh, one hearing number fourteen, ten a.m., two hearings on the twenty-first, ten and six, and you'll vote on it at six thirty. Okay? Next Tuesday, September the fourteenth, we will run another ad in the newspaper, it's basically the same advertisement, minus the first hearing date, so this will be from the two on the twenty-first. Also, by law, we have to issue a press release to the Griffin News, um, so this was also sent to Crystal and Griffin News today, uh, they have discretion for whether they publish, they press release, but we do have to give it to them, and I put in yellow what I was just saying about reassessed property. Um, to my knowledge, everyone, I've asked the assessors' office about this, everyone in Spalding County is not reassessed every year. So, and I'm, I'm making an assumption, I'm gonna say one-fourth of the county. If one-fourth of the county is assessed this year, and that twenty-five dollar item I was just talking about, apply those votes. The only other increase that should happen would be if they did an improvement to property, or if they got an increase based on one of the other tax entities, whether that be the city or the county here in, uh, Griffin's Fall. So our timeline, um, again, budget was adopted in June, we had a good informational meeting, Mr. Simmons and I went down there with the Tax Commissioner, the Tax Assessor, and the city and county managers, the, the new county manager was not there, but the assistant county manager and staff were there at the time. Um, August seventeenth, I had planned to do this presentation, but I had something come up, we had postponed that, so we're doing that tonight. Uh, and you can see our, our upcoming meetings laid out for you. September twenty-second, uh, I will communicate the BOE millage rates in a letter to the county manager, and by law, they have to adopt that at their county commissioner meeting. Ms. Hollins is shooting for a October first deadline. Taxes, to my knowledge, uh, given to the state, rates are really August first, but tax entities can get extensions, so I believe she's applied for an extension, and that's why we're using October the first. Last slide, uh, here's my transparent information, I'm glad to talk to anyone via email, via phone, that's my extension, uh, if there's a concern from a taxpayer entity, which I've had some early on, that I explained some information to, uh, I'm glad to talk to them at any time. Is everybody okay if, if I come off of the presentation, and any questions?
Yes.
Um, Ms., Mr. Jones, uh, and I was just asking, uh, Superintendent Simmons, I couldn't exactly remember, that, there was some, um, media communication put out this, this past week about the county, can, do you remember, do any board member, member, uh, remember seeing what the county, uh, was going to do as far as a, a percentage increase or whatever that was? I, I can't remember exactly what.
I saw an ad in the paper today, uh, in the Griffin News, and the county, uh, I believe is having three hearings as well, I don't remember the names of them, but I know they are having hearings, I'm not sure about the city.
You remember seeing anything, Ms. Shepherd, or hearing it? Okay.
We, we just, uh, I'm looking at my email here from Clay Davis, who is the county chair, I believe the, his words are, "I believe the Board of Commissioners will approve the same millages last year, and therefore there will be no tax increase." That was sent out, um, last Friday.
Last, yeah, last Friday, okay. All right, board members, any, any other questions, or anything that you have for Mr. Jones while we have him on? We, we appreciate you putting on that, uh, that shirt and tie and coat, uh, we don't wanna see the bottom of the screen, though.
I have prepared one thing at once.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Jones, and it, and it's, uh...
Good to see you.
...good to see that you are doing, doing better. Uh, we can't wait, not, not trying to rush you, but, uh, we can't wait to see you in person, and, uh, get you back with us, uh, good and healthy.
Good to see you, Byron.
Yes.
I kept hoping he would tell us what he did to make his wife mad enough to butcher his hair.
All right. We, uh, we have a couple of, uh, information items, uh, our monthly facility and maintenance report, and our construction and renovation, uh, progress summary. Uh, I know this has been a busy time for Mr. Ballot and, uh, his department, his crew, and, um, you, you know, we, we appreciate the work, not only he's doing, but, but our staff are doing. We have...
I have just one question, Mr....
Go ahead, go ahead, Ms., Ms. McDonald.
Mr. Bruce, Mr. Akins, I'm glad y'all are still here. I just, I spoke with the superintendent about this earlier. Everyone in this room knows, I'm real concerned about our schools being clean and kept clean, and I see that as of August thirty-one, we have eighteen custodial openings, I hope that number is down. Can someone provide me an update, please?
Just so the public can hear too. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, there, there are eighteen openings, but of those, as of tomorrow, we should have ten of those, or filled with temp, um, custodians, and, um, so also in that, um, number is the three that we were, um, had in the budget this year for floater custodians. So, we're not quite as bad, we're really just five short at the schools. Um, we did have one on the agenda tonight for actual hiring, and, um, in the process and getting close on two others, um, that we're hoping to be able to move in the next month, um, from temp service to employees, which we like to do that, to try to feel like we, they're in it with us and, um, you know, willing to stick with us, so, um, we're glad of that. So, yes, ma'am, it, it is, it's not where we'd like to be, but it's not as bad as we have been.
I understand that. I, I appreciate that, because you know, it's, uh, we can't keep our buildings clean, then, um, that makes our decision up here even more convoluted, and, um, I just have to reassure our students and our parents, and our faculties and our staffs, that the building they walk into every morning is gonna be clean, and, um, I think all of us in the room would agree to that, so I thank you for that, those numbers going down, thank you for your hard work.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you again, uh, Mr. Ballot. Uh, and, and other board members, I wanted to extend you an opportunity before we, uh, go into executive session, to make any public comments or that you would like to make. We'll start with Mr. Dos to my left.
Very thankful and grateful for our staff and all the hard work that you are doing. Um, I think Mr. Simmons uses the word pivot, and, uh, having to make adjustments on the fly, and very thankful and grateful for you, thank you.
I would just ditto, thank you, Mr. Chair, I would just ditto what Mr. Dos just said, you know, we're going through some, some hard times, roads that we've never been down before, and, um, I think pivot's a great word, because every play is different, every day is different, but I can assure you that we're gonna do what's in the best interest of, for the most, best, we're gonna do what's best for the most.
Best for the most.
I, I never will forget that quote I heard earlier this year, and, uh, thank you to all the people in the room that do this on a daily basis, thank you for our constituents that came to speak to us tonight, and, uh, just take a day at a time, that's really all we all have, just take, I just take a day at a time, thank you so much.
Um, uh, Ms. Cook?
We continue to follow, we continue to follow, and we continue to monitor, all the municipal officials, and they are very creative, super tough, and we, 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 we don't, we don't, just, uh, we, 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 we,[1782.82]
years, and, and we don't take what we're facing lightly, but we're trying to do, as Ms. McDonald said, the best for the most. And, and I think people need to understand that we don't have a perfect answer, but we're doing something, whether it's right, wrong, or indifferent, we're doing something, and we're trying to do the best for all concerned, because we, we are in the same fight that you're in. And my motto that I have for today, for anyone, family, friends, enemies, just stay in the fight. You, you can't win if you're not in the fight. So, thank you all. We have one item for executive session to discuss school safety plans pursuant to OCGA twenty dash two dash one one eight five.
Ms. Chairman, can I get you to add one other item, and I promise you I'm gonna be brief?
You, you better be...
But it's discussing pending litigation.
Pending...
It won't take, it won't take but a minute, I promise.
Okay, all right. Also, to discuss pending litigation. With that being said, we thank you all for being here with us, showing your support and your concern. With that being said, we are...
I'll, I'll make the motion, I'll make the motion.
...to go into executive session. We got a motion, can we get a second?
Second.
Got a second, all in favor? We're now entering into executive session.